Good afternoon to all of you. I'm really pleased to be here with Rüdian Neri to share with you our thoughts on the way forward for PGS. A clear image. We want to build a clear image of PGS as a geophysical services company. Building on productivity lead, building on technology edge and building on customer focus. And we want our customers and we want our investors to see the same as we see and as clearly as we see, a clear image of PGS. I think it is important to underline that a strategy rollout is not a final recipe for how we should develop PGS in the months, quarters and years ahead. A strategy rollout is a start. It's a start for in-depth involvement in each business unit to develop the concrete plans together, to develop these concrete steps and ideas and actions which PGS need to move ahead. In many ways, the timing for this rollout is ideal. Our industry is changing. The combination between CDG and Veritas announced a few weeks back. Schlumberger shares acquisition of 100% of the shares of Western Gecko. Things are happening. Things are changing. I would like to say that when we see CDG and Veritas getting together, it is not because we as PGS are sleeping in class or because we did not find that event of some interest to us. Indeed, Veritas and PGS would fit extremely well together. But we've said all the time that consolidation in this industry will be headed by PGS only to the extent that we can create value for our shareholders. We do not see that the terms offered by CDG would create value for our shareholders. We can clearly see that it does create value for Veritas shareholders, but consolidation and value creation must go hand in hand. And importantly, with these three big actors in this industry, we have an industry in which the three big companies have 80 to 90% of capacity and revenues, at least on the marine side of the business. We have three companies which are roughly at par when it comes to streamer capacity, in particular taking into account our decision to invest in Ramform 7 and in Ramform 8. We have three companies with a turnover where PGS is slightly behind the others. Remember, turnover data also reflect the other companies somewhat bigger strengths in processing turnover wise and in land and to some extent relatively speaking, multi-client. And market capitalization, the two companies, CDG, Veritas and ourselves, roughly at par. The value for Western Gecko here reflects the implicit price or value as reflected in the offering price from Schlumberger a few months back, obviously also containing an important controlled premium. I think the main message from the change in industry structure is that we as PGS will definitely benefit from an improved structure in terms of the future market capacity management, market management and capacity management. The key question is how we should benefit and position ourselves and we believe it is about building a clear image. We are a marine company. We are an onshore company. We are a geophysical services company. We have some demonstrated key strengths. Productivity leadership is seen by ourselves. It is also seen by our customers. Dedication to innovation, new ideas for how to serve the customers is also well demonstrated by PGS over time. And we are well recognized for a strong and sustained HSE focus in everything we do. There are some key ambitions associated with this direction I will talk about. A distinct provider of geophysical services, geophysical solutions, perhaps from a less distinct geophysical offering profile for PGS. Selective strong customer relations from a predominantly high churn of our customers over time. There is a high turnover of the customer groups in PGS every year. Gaining a top-tier position in data processing from a period where we perhaps have emphasized processing less. That is a change. And a sharper technology edge, commercializing more decisively some key projects and solutions in the year to come. This presentation is about that and it is about how we are going to become a favored seismic company by clients, by investors and by our employees. Because it all starts and ends with employees as we see it. This is not a question of developing the cleverest strategy, the most unique strategy direction. I do not think we will see a huge difference in the strategic direction among geophysical companies in the year to come. This is about execution. It is about delivery. And therefore, it is also about our ability to come together as individuals with our competencies and team up to do a better job than competition. It's execution which will determine how successful the individual geophysical companies will be in the years to come. We are developing a strategy in a context of rapidly changing world. It is not only a question of consolidation in our industry. It is also a question of a very tight market for our services, a tight market after a prolonged period of oversupply in the industry. It's a context of very high oil prices and we should add volatile oil prices as we have seen over the last few weeks. It is also a period of rapidly expanding E and P spending from the oil companies. Indeed, the future look extremely strong in our industry. The world is changing and so is PGS. It's striking to see that we are today having a turnover total sales which is higher as a dedicated geophysical company than we had two years ago when we also had both floating production and our own E and P company in the portfolio. We have higher turnover and we have been able to increase margins in our business very substantially based on excellent performance and operations as well as a strong market. And we have been able to reduce our debt very, very significantly. It means that PGS today has achieved a platform in terms of financial performance, recognition in the financial markets and financial strength which we can use to realize, to implement some of the excellent plans and projects that currently are being pursued within the company. A few words on the market outlook somewhat more in detail. The main driver of the demand for our services will be the oil companies' struggle to replace their reserves in the years to come. On the one hand, oil companies have extremely high ambitions when it comes to production growth. And at the same time, as we see from the numbers, they are struggling to replace their reserves. Reserve replacement ratios are still extremely low. And it means that what is happening is a rapidly mounting E and P spending track from the oil companies. E and P spending in 2006 up above 30%, 25% in 2007, 20% and above in 2008. This is good news for PGS as a geophysical company because it means that our competence, our services are in high demand. And it's linked both to more reservoir understanding and the monitoring for mature producing basins. It's linked to exploration for new resources and in particular deep water and deep targets are critical in this context. We see national oil companies becoming much more important as a customer group, opening up for new customer relations over time. And we see in general that oil companies are demanding more competence and more integrated solutions from us as a geophysical company. Good news and it happens on the background of continued high and volatile oil prices, obviously representing one major uncertainty for the future market outlook. And in particular, a rapid buildup of marine seismic capacity in particular, 60% 2005 to 2008, perhaps representing the biggest threat towards the length of the cycle we have ahead of us. Demand side is strong, uncertainty linked to new entrants and new investments in our industry. Importantly for us, the position gives substantial upside. As part of this strategy exercise, we implemented a pretty comprehensive customer survey helped by the Boston Consulting Group. And these are some of the feedback we got from the customers. I think it's good to see that the customers recognize exactly what we see as our core strengths, efficiency and reliability, the no-surprise approach, good technical people. It's no surprise that we are more recognized in marine than we are in onshore, given our history and record. And it's no surprise either, or it should be no surprise either, that we are in the customers' eyes lagging in data processing, given the fact that we have de-emphasized this area to a larger extent than our competitors over the last few years. PGS is seen as number one in delivery and efficiency, but not as leader in all areas. We have strong competitors. Western Gecko is seen as the leading company in our industry by our customers. I think that's a broad statement, but it is a feedback from our customers. It gives us the advantage of attacking, but solid across the board, market leader overall and increasingly known for Q. Now, we may doubt their ability to earn money from Q and I think that's a fair conclusion. But they are recognized. CDG, Veritas, less so. Good at processing, I think is the most important feedback they get. Acquisition capabilities, not first-class, slow to respond. I'm shoving you this picture not to talk ourselves down, but simply to say this is an excellent starting point for us because we can approach the market possibilities moving ahead from a position of attacker, from a position of strength and still with a very, very substantial upside, a substantial potential to take out. So what should make us different? What should we really build on to make a difference to the other two main competitors and others? We believe productivity lead and productivity lead because our customers believe in it and we believe in it and we are proud of it. This is something that PGS has shown the ability to deliver and it's a major distinguisher in a market which is very tight and with the ability to deliver is a key strength in the eyes of the customer. Technology edge because customers demand more of it and because we have the ability to deliver. We have concrete, specific projects which we believe will do exactly that, deliver a sharper technology edge to the customers. And strong selective customer relations because we have unused ways of distinguishing of offering based on a more intimate knowledge of what the customer really wants. When I comment upon the churning of customers, that our top 10 customers change every year, I'm also pointing out that most probably we will earn more if we are able to get closer to our customers, to shape our offering even better and take out more value from that kind of relationship and that kind of knowledge. A distinctly positioned geophysical company with a full suite of offerings. Let's give the highlights of the strategic direction in the main areas of PGS. The ambition to be number one in marine acquisition with the world's most advanced seismic fleet. You got the last proof of our commitment this morning when we announced the building of the second Ramform third generation vessel. And obviously, to make that third generation Ramform vessel a success, both technically and commercially, is key to this strategy on the contract and acquisition side. This is about enhancing our productivity lead. It's also about supporting a further penetration in the high-density 3D markets. And in addition to this, we are working hard to be able to launch a new generation streamer which should further boost the performance of PGS over time. Multi-client. Accelerated multi-client investment to maintain the world's biggest and most versatile MC3D library. We are targeting 20,000 square kilometers of new multi-client data annually. And obviously, the Gulf of Mexico will be a key to this. And that's why your achievement in ensuring the Crystal Watts project is such a breakthrough in terms of showing the way we need to work to really build that renewed position in multi-client. It will be key to secure vessel capacity to implement our plans and we know that contract margins are strong and we should optimize our fleet as we move along. There will also be a further emphasis on mega-surveys for new areas. We believe that will be an important part of PGS marketing and profile over time. Onshore, to grow onshore acquisitions through profitable expansion in key select markets. Expansions, we believe, can profitably happen in North America, but in addition, North Africa and through a reactivation in Arctic and Latin America when a political situation will open up for that. Also on the onshore side, we will emphasize more multi-client and there are good opportunities and very, very promising results from the effort to date. Data processing. I mentioned the customer general feedback. I think we should also underline that we are moving at a very fast pace from a period of slowdown over the last few years. The pre-stacked depth migration, the newly reprocessed flex trend data in the Gulf of Mexico show that we have capabilities which will be decisive in the competition in the years to come. We are up and running. And through emphasizing the two legs listed here, both the external markets and the reprocessing of our own library, we are convinced that processing will be an important business for us in its own right, but also critically, a key exhibition window for PGS vis a vis the customers when it comes to our technical profile and our technical edge. Yeah, I jumped ahead one more there. Investing in new technology to differentiate and broaden service offering. In the area of fiber optics, we have been working intensively over the last couple of years to build what we regard as a promising new business area for PGS. Fiber optics, commercialized and proven, represent an excellent opportunity to enter the permanent monitoring market. And I look upon this effort as key to profiling PGS in the years to come. The new generation streamer technology I already mentioned, that is also one part of our technology portfolio which really distinguish PGS and where we think we can further build on the profile vis a vis customers in terms of being a leader in acquisition technology. And in the area of DP algorithms, that will be part of the DP push, I do think we have the capabilities, also building on our own talent as well as the possibility to recruit new. The last element, actively seek acquisition and diversification opportunities to strengthen business line position and support growth. PGS has historically not emphasized acquisitions a lot. I do think that in a world where we compete for competence and talent, acquiring smaller companies, medium-sized companies to add to our own portfolio and integrate in an effective way, deep integration or more loose integration, may be an effective way of pushing forward to build PGS as a stronger technology-focused company and to expand in the areas where we currently have a lower market share. It will take both people and capital to implement this strategy. We expect around 350 million US dollars of new investments in total on average every year in the next four to five years. More than two-thirds of this investment will be within multi-client marine and contract acquisition marine. We expect to recruit more than 300 people over the next four years in onshore, but to a large extent also in what we call new ventures, that is the new technologies which we will develop and commercialize and in processing. The emphasis on people. We will not be able to implement this strategy if we are not able to take very major steps in the area of people development, people recruitment, training and reward. The PGS people survey, which most of you have responded to over the last few weeks, is one simple tool but important tool to build a better working environment in PGS. Obviously, it will depend on our ability to respond to your comments and take actions to improve working environment and management accordingly. A comprehensive management training program with Duke. I strongly believe that better management is a key to developing PGS moving forward and this is a huge effort. 250 managers plus to go through training over the next 18 months or so to become better in leaders, better as leaders, better to develop our strategy, better to implement our strategy. A massive recruitment effort. PGS need to be profiled as an attractive place to work. And the guys who can do this are all of you in this room. Companies do not attract people. We working in the company do attract people. And therefore, each one of us as ambassadors for PGS will be a key to this recruitment effort in addition to developing the competence we have today and the talent we have today in the company. Performance management. We have continued that work. We will continue with it and we will increasingly emphasize the bonus reward systems which are necessary for each one of us also to have a share of the financial success of PGS. A new total strategy, but what is really new? Well, there is no doubt that we will invest substantially more in the years to come than we've done in the past. And obviously, that means our ability to define projects well, screen the projects well and have so many projects that we can say no to the good and say yes to the best. Substantial new multi-client projects with the prospectivity surpassing our screening criteria and with an outlook in terms of catch flow which enables these projects to compete with a strong contract market. Onshore. Onshore must be able to prove a sustained profitability improvement over time. It is a demanding market and we need to prove in each project and every year that we are able to move along that improvement curve. Data processing. We raise the ambitions. And when we say that we are going to move from second tier to first tier, we are simply saying that we want to see increased market share in particularly in the market segments which we want to succeed. And we want to see a different feedback from our customers when we run that customer survey three years from now. Higher ambitions for R and D and for commercialization of distinct technologies. I think in particular the last is key because to commercialize technologies, the way we now describe as part of our strategy is in terms of scale and in terms of willingness to put money into the projects that is new to PGS. It is also new that we tie the people programs so closely to the whole strategy implementation. And as I'm saying, without success in this area, we will not succeed. And finally, it is new to grow through acquisitions, to look upon acquiring smaller companies, acquiring competence as one way of increasing our edge moving along. Where do we go from here? We have had a comprehensive strategy process for the last few months. A task force headed by Tom Siggler based in London has done a lot of work together with external support and we've come a long way. But there is no doubt that the most important part is still ahead of us and that is implementation planning and target setting by each business unit to roll out this direction and make it come true. We need some fine-tuning of the organization, but to a large extent, we feel that we can use the organizational structure we have today and succeed through that. We also need project startups for a few areas across PGS. I mentioned the importance of understanding the customer needs even better. Stronger customer focus. I mentioned the need to have a more distinct geophysical offering to utilize even better what we already have, but to market it in a way which is more convincing to the markets and to the customers. A transition zone strategy which builds both on marine and onshore competence. And reservoir value creation, what is the ideal and optimum balance between external and internal value creation in that area. By the end of the year, we should be able to build this strategy into 2007 budgets and KPIs and we should also be able to build it into individual KPIs moving on, ready to go. So how would success three years from now look like? Well, there are many ways to describe that, but let me give one try. First, best at what we do. We should be best in what we are doing, not necessarily the largest, but we should do it best. Ramform 7, the introduction of new acquisition technology is key. And it should be a proven success both commercially and technically. Higher fleet productivity and streamer margins to demonstrate that we are able to systematically over time improve the productivity of our total work and our total fleet and to put competitors further behind when it comes to delivered streamer margins. 60,000 square kilometers added to the multi-client 3D library over three years and with a prospectivity and a potential for late sales which surpasses our threshold levels. Onshore with a proven sustained profitability record. A proven leader in HSE, a core of our approach to running our business and a core group of customer partners in place, like the partnership with BP in developing wide estimate approaches and technology. A better workplace. We need to become a favored employer for us who work in PGS, but also for new people coming to PGS. And I think that we need to work in many more areas than are listed here. But the working environment using the people survey will be key and it will be important to follow up and do something. Effective management, running through the Duke Port One, Two, Three program as we call it, it should be successfully completed. And as I said, we should all have a share in adding value in PGS through the bonus schemes we have established and which we need to develop and adjust in the years to come. Technology edge. New generation stream commercialized. We should be able to achieve that during the last, during the next three years. Fiber optics. We should have demonstrated that an entry to permanent monitoring is feasible. We should have completed successfully some selected acquisitions, adding competence to the PGS portfolio. And data processing should be recognized as a top tier in wide estimate, multi-estimate, in depth migration and in multiple suppression. The three key segments where we would really like to succeed and make a difference over the coming three years. It's a strategy which is built on a goal of becoming the preferred geophysical stock for investors. But obviously, it is first and foremost a strategy which is built on our consistent track record of delivery, reliability and consistency in what we offer to our customers. That's the sharper image, clearer image strategy for PGS. And that is also setting the stage for the service line strategy implementations which will be presented by Eric first and then Rune. So Eric, I give the word to you.
Thank you, Sven. I'll start with a brief look of the rationale behind the onshore strategy and our general goals. On the contract side, we have the aspiration to grow to two hundred and seventy million by the year two thousand ten. For reference, two thousand five, we were a hundred twenty-two million in contract and two thousand six, we're projected to come in around two hundred. So we've grown some, but we see significant room to take out further growth. And we plan to do that by focusing on significant strategic markets around the world, base markets. We choose these markets based on potential large reserve quantities, sustainable market. And meeting those two criteria, we look for markets where our differentiators can have an application. Places where our people's know-how, our relationships, our technological differentiators will make a difference. We will go into those markets with those differentiators. Our equipment solutions, social action, innovative drilling techniques developed by our mechanical group, permitting capabilities, as well as our technological solutions to make us more competitive. The amount of differentiation in each market varies greatly. In some markets, the main reason to be there is the high market demand and short supply of crews. Other markets such as Southern Mexico, the differentiation of our social action is a tremendous competitive advantage for us. So this regional portfolio is very important to us. The onshore business, as all seismic business, is cyclical, but it's cyclical on a regional basis. So having access to these different markets around the world is very important to us. The base markets we've identified now are Alaska, the Lower Forty-Eight U.S., Mexico and Libya. These are markets where we've worked a great deal in the past or are currently working and have had success. Apart from that, we identify opportunistic markets. Now, these are markets that may have equal amounts of differentiation for us where we can compete effectively, but may not have the consistent market sustainability of some of the other markets or markets where we're maintained on the outside due to high competition. Canada, for example. Canada is a market with a lot of reserves, it's got a lot of activity, but it's got some very entrenched local suppliers. That means if we want to come in in a big way, we'd have to buy our way in. And we're not in a position to do that. So we've taken it as a pick and choose market. We go in with one crew, try and choose the best contract and get the best margin out of there. Then again, we're looking at Canada very closely right now with the CGG purchase of Veritas. That situation may change. And if so, we'll take advantage of that, hopefully moving that to a base market. Latin America and Eastern Hemisphere portable, these are two areas we've done very well when we've worked in these areas. But they've been sporadic markets and thus we can't consider them base markets, but we'll consider, continue to focus so when there are opportunities, we can take them. TZ, we've recently struggled with our job in Nigeria. It's a deeper water job, further offshore, requiring large vessel support. Going forward, we will focus on our original focus for TZ tied into land surveys or shallow water, protected water surveys, while we evaluate our overall strategy as a company together with Marine. On the multi-client side, we hope to grow to a fifty million dollar level by two thousand ten. Two thousand five, we were at thirty. This year, we're forecast to come in around forty-five. So it may look as if we're almost there. Well, two thousand six has been a very good year for late sales, which is great. But I think we have to be realistic and look at continued sustained investment in multi-client in order to reach that fifty million level throughout time consistently. HD three D has been a big success for us in multi-client, both in Alaska as well as in Oklahoma. Our data sets in the mid-continent, each successive data set has had higher trace densities than the previous survey. And the clients are asking for more and thus far they've been willing to pay for it. So we'll continue to push that technology in that area. We'll be focusing on a lot of new regions in the U.S. as we look for new places to invest, new fairways where we can dominate and keep our competition out. To do that, we may have to change the strategy of our business model a bit. Our conservative strategy, the past few years, we've been fully cash funded on every survey we've taken on. Going forward, we may have to accept surveys with potentially less pre-funding, but also a higher late sales potential. And to do that, we're going to have to develop a strong G and G skillset so we can prove out the prospectivity of those areas. And as multi-client increases, along with the continued high activity on contract in the Lower Forty-Eight, we cannot rule out the opportunity to contract third-party crews. This is a new area for us and we have to enter very carefully to develop the project management skills so that we take care of the quality of our 3D data sets. Moving on into the core of the strategy, what we have to do as we move forward. As I mentioned, increase presence in our key areas. Increase presence within those areas, North America and North Africa, as well as looking for new key areas to add. Our efficiency edge, price is always key in the onshore market. And so efficiency will continue to be very important and we need to drive out all the improvements in efficiency we can. Experience from two thousand six growth. Late two thousand five into two thousand six, we rolled out a Nigerian TZ crew, three new crews in Libya, as well as reactivated Arctic crew on the north slope of Alaska. And the onshore people in this room know the tremendous effort that took. It pushed our organization to its limits. And everyone here from onshore who participated in that and the field personnel should be congratulated because that hard effort made at the beginning of this year is driving our success today. We have to look back at that period. We're in a bit of a consolidation right now. We're consolidating what we have, we're training new people. And we will come to grow again to take out that extra growth we see. But we have to look back at that growth phase and see what we did well and what we can do better. Key people, we need to continue to bring in key people from outside the organization as well as develop the people within our organization. As I mentioned, a strong G and G skillset will be critical as we go into lower pre-funded multi-client areas. And systems and resources, we're a larger business now. Onshore has typically been a hundred and fifty million dollar company. We're now approaching two fifty, we hope to go above three hundred. So we need to make sure we have the systems in place to guarantee the safety, operability, accountability of our crews. But we have to be very careful that we do not damage the dynamic profile of our company. Maintaining the decision-making and responsibility close to the operations is essential for success in our business. And it's essential if we want to attract people, we want to attract people who know they can be in positions to make decisions and make a difference in our company. So we look to expand in North Africa, we will be adding a 3D crew in North America. Latin America, we can see a reactivation coming. We've made a strategic focus to maintain a presence in Latin America as well as the Arctic. And as Latin America reactivates, we need to bring the people back from North Africa that we sent to ramp up North Africa. So we have to develop the people we've hired in North Africa to fill those positions so those people become available. In conclusion, what have we done? We've had significant growth in the past year. We've brought in a hundred new people into the organization in key positions over the past year. We're rolling out a strategy, what's new here? Two key areas I identify for onshore, access to capital for growth. We've been running on a minimal capital spend in onshore with most of that capex focused on maintenance rather than expansion. Now having access to capital to grow will allow us to focus on expanding in some key markets where there's real potential. As well as having a more aggressive profile to expanding our multi-client business. To conclude, three areas that are critical for our success. The first one, everything flows from the people. The other two areas on this list flow from the people. The onshore business, the equipment's available off the shelf. All our competitors use the same equipment. It's the people that differentiate us, it's the application of that technology that makes a difference in our business. So we need to continue to try and look for the best people and develop the good people already within our organization. Quality, we can't have any quality accidents if we're going to deliver sustained profitability, it's that simple. Innovation. We're looking forward to a continued increase in our market, the market's good right now for our services. We can see an increase, it looks good going forward. But we know this is a cyclical business and any innovations, differentiators we can develop now will serve us well when the next downturn does come. Thank you, I'll turn it over to Rune to cover Marine.
Okay, I will go over to Marine acquisition and a little bit around the fleet and also around our contract business. This is the heart and the pulse of PGS. Everything we do is dependent on having a safe seismic and good quality seismic, I call it. I call it safe seismic. And we have initiatives to and actually ambitions to be number one in that area. You have heard today that we're actually building another ram form, it's ram form seven and now it's also ram form eight. These are the Ferraris at sea, so we want to have more of them. They're fast. They're stronger and it takes us further. It's not only about the fleet and what you have on the boat is actually also what you bring behind the boat. And we mentioned the next generation streamer. To be able to tow like eighteen, twenty and up to more than that streamers, we need new streamer technology. But we also need to have streamer technology that makes us able to steer streamers and make us more efficient. The efficiency of the fleet is actually the cornerstone of our cash earnings. We have talked about people. And it's the same with our vessels. I believe we have the best crews on our vessels in the industry. We're going to build on that to make them even better, develop the people and make sure that we have a competitive compensation system for our offshore people. That was a little bit around the fleet. But also in the contract business, you need to manage your clients. You need to manage some of the governments and you need to manage your national oil companies and international oil companies, it's a lot of work to be done there. We have called it getting closer to the client. We called it going north. And that is something that we will work with across the organization, both on Marine acquisition but also in DP. So what's new, what will be different? Well, there's two new Ferraris coming, one in two thousand eight and one in two thousand nine. We have some challenges of getting our premium for the HD three D. It's a product where we have a lot of streamers behind our vessels and we want to make a sharper picture, you know, more pixels in our picture. We need to invest more in technology, it's the only way we can drive the ram form fleet further. And me, Eric, Sven, we're all part of this task to getting closer to the client and make sure that we get more of the types of BP relationships that we have today. That actually brought us the wide estimate technology into the organization. On multi-client, we will invest more in multi-client. We mentioned twenty thousand square kilometers. Well, that's the 3D. We will do more of 2D. We will do more reprocessing. We will use the expertise that sits in PGS reservoir to do more reports, particularly in CIS, for example. We will go into the areas where we need to be, to be a dominant multi-client player. And it goes without saying, that's the Gulf of Mexico. We're starting the WATS survey, the Wide Ascent Survey in October. And we have no option. It needs to be a success in acquisition, in processing. And Mungna has already discussed with me the option of failure, which is probably going to be something on McDonald's or similar, but we'll take that after discussion. I will join you. Also the new areas, we're looking at new areas in the Caspian. Sakhalin. We need to replace the multi-client areas that used to be the cash machine for us like Nigeria. And we need to build further on the strengths of the mega survey, new mega surveys, more mega surveys. And need to use our people in PDS reservoir to do that. And for those of you who remember Spinnaker, that was a great successor in the Gulf. Those are the similar kind of things we need to do with the library in other places. And we can do it and we do it in the North Sea. Mungna's got another deal here with Mission in the Gulf of Mexico. We have several deals going and we will continue to take more value out of the library through those kind of deals. What's new? I told about the investment. We invest more and to the extent I will actually find a list of projects where we have to turn some down, but we'll do the best ones. We need more staff to do multi-client. It's a challenging task to do multi-client because you need to find the right areas, you need to have the right quality and you need to deliver in time. Higher returns on multi-client projects, higher pre-funding, but also to be able to deliver those projects for the license round where we see that we can avoid some of, you know, to be honest, some of the failures that we did in the past on multi-client library. Where we shot in Brazil with fifteen hundred dollars per square in pre-funding. The pre-funding we're looking at now is at least ten times. And we need to continue to develop those new business models. Data processing. Very important for us. I would like to start with this Ferrari again because what the clients see is our 3D cube. because what the client see is our 3D cube. He sees the final processed seismic cube. He doesn't see the feel taste from Ramform. And this is why data processing always is a focus in the major service companies. Unfortunately, it's never been a business of high profit. We have been through a difficult period where under-investing in DP actually hits us now. But starting last year, I think data processing has had a tremendous turnaround. And there's a lot of good things that has been done. And we are actually ranked among some oil companies as best in our class. When I'm seeing that we're going to lift PGS to an undisputed top-tier position, it doesn't mean that we're going to be best in everything, but it does mean that we are going to be best in a few areas. And that ties next to, or to the next point, where we will increase and focus the R and D efforts on the key segments. Obviously, key segment here in the Gulf is depth processing, and we need to do more depth processing. We have a few percent of a huge market. We ranked number one by BP in 4C processing. Unfortunately, that's a very niche market and very small. We need to change our focus. And we need to believe in it. I need to believe it in, Swain need to believe it in, and we need to have that belief going through the whole organization because we are going to be best in some areas, and that's what I mean by top tier. That doesn't mean that we're not going to make money on data processing. We will focus on the multi-clients, but also we need to take advantage of the high-volume processing. And in that case, it actually believes, I believe, that we have a job to do on the economy of scale in data processing. Eric has promised me that he will have a firm commitment for land processing going forward. So Eric, I look forward to discuss the bill. And also, what we're seeing on data processing is an excellent recruitment base for PGS. We see a lot of good people coming out of DP, to their frustration sometimes, over to other positions in PGS. We have that goal, to be undisputed top-tier position. We need more people. That's a challenge today, but we do need more people. Higher revenues and margins, and focus. And not the least, everyone in this forum that works in DP should be a proud member of data processing. New ventures. We mentioned permanent monitoring and fiber optics. We have just had a management meeting here in Houston for two days. And Steve Miles came down from Austin and told us a little bit about the latest update of the tests we have done in Gulf of Mexico on fiber optic permanent monitoring. Very interesting. I believe it's near a breakthrough where we can actually offer this as a commercial service. It's a good example of something that we have worked on for many years. And it didn't really come to any focus before, about a year ago, where we saw that we actually had this technology, and we started to focus on it. And that's my point again about in PGS. We have had several good people working with new technology, but we have been a bit crap about taking those technologies to commercial products. We have not been able to do it for understanding that we, or reasons we understand. You know, we worked in a time where cash was king and we needed to do even more focus. But now, we will focus on commercializing some of the R and D efforts that we're working with. We are working with several things. We are working with TAODEM, electromagnetic surveys, where we're doing promising tests in marine environment. And we're also looking at the TSET market, shallow water, that Eric mentioned. We believe that the fiber optics is actually one area where we could offer something new with the cables that we develop. So what's new? We will have dedicated resources for commercialize the different products that we have. We need more deal-making skills. We need good people to take it out to the oil companies, discuss with them, and come up with good business models because every project is different. And this is about realize the value potential in some of the unique PGS technologies. And needless to say, this is going to be challenging. New business models, new products, and new geophysical offering. R and D. Why do we have R and D? Well, we want to support the strategy, of course, for the business lines and put focus on technologies that give PGS a competitive advantage. I'm very focused that that should be on where we have the heart and pulse of PGS, which is the fleet, or at least in PGS Marine. But we also need to invest more in DP because I've talked a lot about being the top tier, but we have a whole group here in Houston with Rubens Group, SPT Group, developing software. Again, we need focus, and we need to have the right processing software in-depth migration, in-wide-asymmet, in-multi-asymmet, and in multiple removal. And it's one thing that we're not going to do again, like we started up in '97 with a 4C crew, where we really didn't know where to go. We didn't have any clear commitment from any clients, but we've struggled a lot to be in the front of a technology development. What we're saying and what we're building on now is the kind of relationship that we have with BP, long-term commitment. They're committed through their projects and their money they put into the projects, and we're committed by the people that we allocate to the projects. That's the way it should be. And as Perrari has always said, we need to focus on the client needs. People. R and D is people. And particularly in the R and D, I think we need to be much better on having cooperation with universities and also make PGS a popular place to work with good professional development opportunities. What's new? We will increase more R and D investments. And we'll focus it on where we believe we have the biggest return on the assets that we invest in. Few selected technologies. And if that success means that we have one or two or three commercialized products in two, three years' time, well, that's a hell of a difference from what has been in the past. Learn more people and understand the client, on their client needs, and not the least, have a commercial mindset. That was it.